Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Van for the pledge.
You'd all rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could bow your heads for a moment. Our Father, thank you for all the abundant blessings. Thank you for life and health. Thank you. We value this community, the environment, the people, and the opportunities. As we gather to transact city business tonight, watch over and guide us. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, we have an agenda before us this evening, and I would like to ask for an addition to be added to the agenda, which would be six B, an SBA update. Do I have a motion to do that?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to amend the agenda to add an SBA update. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We will move right on to 2018 audit review. Kevin Vaughn, please. Good evening.
My name is Kevin Vaughn, and I'm with Plattenburg CPAs. We're currently contracted through the Auditor of State's office to perform the city's audit, and I'm here to review the results of your 2018 fiscal audit. So you should have a copy of the single audit report. This gives a good summary of your audit results.
Okay.
So if you turn in there, I'll just briefly kind of do an overview, and then in the end, there's a nice summary of the results of all the different aspects of the audit. So as you turn in there, at first, you come across your schedule of federal awards, and that just summarizes federal expenditures under federal grants for the year. You had approximately $2.5 million that was considered under this audit. And then you turn to pages two and three. This is the Yellow Book Audit Report, and it's an audit related to internal control and compliance with law. And again, the results will be covered in the back. It's very boilerplate, so I won't get into the details. And on pages four and five, we have the single audit, or the audit under uniform guidance, and this is the audit required under the federal standards for the major federal grant program of the city. And then if you flip back to pages six and seven, here's where we're gonna hit all the details, kind of the summary of all the aspects of the audit. So here is the schedule of findings and question costs, and it's a required schedule, whether there are findings or question costs, but it gives a summarization of all the reports. Under the first section on the financial statements, that is your CAFR report, our financial statements, which we are not going through tonight due to the immensity of that document, but it had an unmodified opinion, which is basically, in street terms, is a clean audit opinion. And then, right under that is the Yellow Book Report, which was the first report we came across in this. Related material weaknesses identified? No significant deficiencies in internal control, none reported, noncompliance that was material to the financial statements, and we have none reported. And then, the next section covers the federal audit of federal awards and the major grant program. And if we go down in that section just a little bit, I'll point out that the major federal grant tested again this year, because it is the most significant at the city. Each year is the highway planning and construction, with all the street projects that are passed through ODOT, but it's actual federal funding. Again, on that, the internal control aspect of the report, material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies identified, none reported. Type auditor's report opinion, unmodified, which is a clean opinion. And then, they have a separate section here for that, for audit findings, and we have no. And then, basically, the dollar threshold for type A and type B programs, that's considered major and non-major programs, was $750,000. And I believe, if we look back, the only program over that was the highway planning and construction, which was tested. And then, the auditee qualified as a low-risk auditee, and that is a two-year look back. So you could have a terrible audit this year, and you'd still be low-risk if you had good audits the prior two years, but your status will continue next year due to the results of this audit, so. And then, findings related to the financial statements required to be reported under GAGUS? None. And federal award findings and question costs? None. So that's the summary of the audit. I just want to say, the Finance Department and all the different departments at the city that we dealt with were very helpful and transparent during the audit, and got us the information we needed so that we could efficiently do our work. So, does anybody have any questions?
Anyone? It's all clean.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just a point of order before we move forward. I think we missed the approval of minutes on our agenda.
Did we? We sure did. All right, we'll go back and do that. All right, we have, we've been given the minutes for the May 28, 2019 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the May 28 regular meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries abstentions? Anyone? All right, next is the June 10 regular scheduled meeting minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for June 10 regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next is June 10, or June 17, 2019 work session minutes.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the June 17 work session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman Upton.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mayor Stone.
Next, the SBA update. Julie, would you like to, you notified us earlier tonight that you might have some updates for us?
Hi, everybody. I'm Julie Garrett, Public Affairs Specialist for the Office of Disaster Assistance with the SBA. So I wanted to give you the county figures. We just pulled them today for Green County as of this morning. This is gonna sound low, but there's loans in the pipeline, so don't worry about how low it sounds. So anyway, it's $212,400 approved. There are 70 homeowner and renter loans in process right now, and four were approved, and that's for $167,000. Two business loans have been approved for $45,900. There's five more in process. There's two economic injury loans in process for businesses. But then, for the whole Ohio declaration, like all the counties in the declaration, there's been approved $2.4 million, just so you know, we're like moving forward.
$2.4 million in the total, all the categories?
For the whole state, for all the counties and the whole state that are in this declaration. 1,600, 16,000, yeah. Yeah, I just really want to encourage people to apply while they can. The deadline is August 19. And the Disaster Recovery Center at Shaw Elementary, they just dropped their hours a little. It's 8:30 in the morning till 7:00 now, Monday through Saturday. They're not open on Sundays. So we have SBA people there, there's FEMA people there, and then we also have people over at the Beaver Creek Chamber of Commerce, 3210 Beaver Voo Drive. And it's just so good to get one-on-one help, like you can put in the application online, you can call and get it mailed to you, but to have an actual human being you can talk to is very helpful. And then, the last thing is, people don't have to wait for the insurance settlements, and the loans cover things insurance doesn't, like landscaping, fence repair, deck repair, driveway repair. So I'm just trying to get the word out to people, just apply, apply, apply while that door is open, get your foot in it, okay? But do you guys have any questions?
I know that you, I know that you work closely with FEMA. Does FEMA, when they send a rejection letter, in essence, do they mention anything in there about the SBA in their letter, do you know?
I really can't, I don't, I've never seen a FEMA decline letter, and I'm not really allowed to talk about FEMA, but I know that FEMA does tell people to apply to SBA. And I know that when people apply to SBA and they are not able to get a loan from us, that we do refer them back to FEMA, and that in some cases, they're considered for further grant assistance.
Okay.
So I think that people are really in crisis right now, and they think that maybe their insurance is gonna cover, and it's not. So what happens to people when you, is the door officially closed when it's closed? Or what happens when people realize that what they thought was gonna work out, and in six months, they go, well crap, I didn't do what I needed to do? What options do they have at that point?
With SBA? It just depends on where our deadline is. Sometimes with disasters, they'll move the deadline back, but there's no guarantee.
You do sometimes.
Yeah, it's usually when there's a very large disaster, like a huge hurricane that affects the, you know, affects the entire state.
So right now, the deadline is?
August 19. And so, if somebody applies, and they don't really know if they want to get the loan, they can turn it down, and they have 60 days to make up their minds, so they should get their insurance settlement, right, in 60 days? But if they turn it down, they can turn, they can reapply and use that same application for six months. So just getting your foot in the door, getting that application in gives you options that you're not gonna have if you miss that deadline. So please, people who are impacted, please apply. It's just, just to have that as a potential tool if you need it. Like, it's really helpful. I've met people lately who say, oh, I had that loan, it helped me get on with my recovery. I know they're really good loans.
Getting the message out's the hard part.
Yeah, it is.
Comments? Anybody else?
Yeah, if there's anything you all can do, or any suggestions you have for outreach, please contact me anytime, okay? Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. All right, next on the agenda is public hearing, Z19-1.
This is an application filed by Jonathan Speck, 3438 O'Hara Drive, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45434. The application requests the rezoning of 1.203 acres of land from R-PUD Residential Plan Unit Development to our -1A one-family residential district. The property abuts 3438 O'Hara Drive to the north and is further described as Book Six, Page Three, Parcel 226, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is the applicant present tonight that might like to make a presentation? Please come forward. Give us a name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. John Speck, I, as you heard, live at 3438 O'Hara Drive. I recently purchased a 1.2-acre parcel behind my lot. It is a landlocked parcel, as it stands now, and my understanding is that it needs to be joined into my existing parcel, and in order to accomplish that, it needs to be rezoned to reflect the zoning of my parcel. I brought you some pictures, if you're interested. If not, if you don't have any questions.
That's strictly up to you. You can show them, or we can wait and see if staff covers it.
I mean, I'll go quickly.
Sure.
I mean, there's the house, as it was when I purchased it in 2011. Some of you are probably familiar with this sign. That was the "For Sale by Owner" of the property back in 2011. That's the backyard. It was pretty overgrown, and you can see there's a lot of broken trees and things there, so I did a lot of work in clearing up my own backyard, and then got to work on these trees, and unfortunately, when I cut the trees, I dropped a tree on the fence that was at the back. So I replaced the fence with this gate, and that gave me access to that land back there. The land was in really bad shape, and you can see, that's a view from behind the fence. So I contacted the owners and said, hey, you know, I look at this every day, do you mind if I go back there and start cleaning this up a little bit? And she said that would be fine. And then I asked her to buy the piece. I sent them a letter here in 2012, asking them to buy the piece. She didn't want to sell me that piece, she wanted to sell me the whole five acres, so I was not interested in that. So she just let me to do some cleaning there. That's how the property looks today, back there, so I've cleaned it up quite a bit. Finally, after being on the market for, since 2011, and probably before then, she, she did sell me the 1.2-acre parcel there that I initially asked for. So that's where I am now. You can see there's still a lot of undergrowth back there, it's really a jungle, and lots of fallen trees. You can see here, this is a house on North Fairfield, it's at the top of the hill. So I get busy in the fall with my chainsaw and get out there and clean things up, but this is where, through the gate now, I've got a nice little area there, and I'm basically just clearing the land and making it look like this from what it is. So this is the lot that was actually lifted off the solicitation there to sell from the Realtor's website. The piece I bought is just this triangle here. So you see this triangle, and this is my lot right here. So the triangle has no street access. There it is, off the GIS server. And then there's the piece as I bought it. So you can see, I just had a surveyor close this triangle off and complete that 1.2 acres, but it is zoned differently, so this is a drawing from my surveyor. What I'm proposing doing here is just splicing this in to my lot here, but this is zoned PUD, and this is zoned residential, so. Also, my deed here, you probably can't read that, but it basically says, I have to do this. I don't know, so that's what that language on the deed says, that I have to join it into my lot, because it's a standalone parcel with no street access. So that's actually written into the deed, a requirement from the county or the city, I'm not sure who required that that language be in there. So that's it. So that's what I'm, that's what the application is all about.
Is that you?
Yeah.
Looks like you're gonna turn it into a park.
Yeah, well, it's not. I often go back there and just sit with a chair and watch the birds, so it's very relaxing back there, so.
All right. Well, thank you.
All right.
We have some questions, we'll get to those later.
Okay.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. As Mr. Speck pointed out, a very detailed portion of his request, this is a fairly simple, but has some unique aspects to it from rezoning. The property that we're looking at, again, is this triangle piece. As you saw in his drawing, it used to be, this was one connected parcel, and this was another parcel, all owned by the same ownership. So there was frontage available along North Fairfield Road here that would ultimately have connected, but since the, in 2009, in February 2009, this lot was recorded as a separate lot, which was landlocked with the conditions by the city that they combined into existing parcel, because we don't want to create any landlocked parcels in the city of Beaver Creek. Why we're here this evening is because the property is currently zoned in R-PUD 89, I believe it's 8913, which was done in conjunction with the rest of this Koya Estates property. This is actually two separate zoning districts. If you come back on the Koya Estates property, you can see the separation line is here, it creates the 8913 as opposed to the 882, or 86, whatever that is there. This was a separate PUD. So in order to combine these lots, the zoning for the PUD 8913 has to be eliminated and rezoned into an R1A property, which is the zoning that he currently has on his property in order to combine it, so we don't have one lot with two separate zoning districts on them. This is 1.2 acre lot. This is a straight rezoning, so there are no conditions to be considered for the application. It is consistent with the land use plan, is a low-density, single-family parcel. Once it is combined, you know, there's not gonna be a house built on it or anything like that, because you're only allowed one primary structure per lot, so this will become one lot, and there will be all the accessory structure limitations that are on R1A properties will be held true for its current property and to the properties as extended to this property be rezoned and combined. But with that, I'll answer any questions after the public hearing? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing this evening. Is there anyone present that would like to address counsel on this application? Seeing none, we will move on to council input. Anybody on council have any comments or input? Very good.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further comments, I would move, motion to move ordinance 1915 to a second and third reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to move.
It's a resolution. It's a resolution instead of an ordinance.
No, it's, it's, we've already corrected that, it's not right on the issue.
No.
That's why I jumped on it.
Good job, good job.
To avoid this conversation.
It is an ordinance.
All right, we have a motion to move the.
Second.
Motion and a second to move the ordinance onto the second and third reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Just keep working, keep working.
Keep clearing.
Keep clearing. Next is a public hearing, PUD 06-3.
This is an application filed by AB Partners LLC, care of David Montgomery, Pickrell Schaefer and Ebling Company, 270 Kettering Tower, 40 North Main Street, Dayton, Ohio, 45423. The applicant requests specific site plan approval to allow for the construction of a 130-unit apartment complex on 6.7 acres. The property is located on the southeast corner of Park Overlook Drive and Grange Hall Road. The property is further described as Book One, Page 11, Part of Parcel 67, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is there an applicant present tonight that would like to make a presentation? If you don't mind, please give us a name and address, and go to it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name's David Montgomery with Pickrell Schaefer and Ebling, 270 Stratocash Tower, now Dayton, Ohio, 45423. With me this evening, I do have a couple members of the development team, and that is Dave Anderson with AB Partners and Homestead America, who is developer and respectively operator of the company. I have Bill Andrews with Andrew Architects, and also Steve Lyle with the Ranky Group. So Dave and Bill will be giving a small presentation after I get through my portion here. First and foremost, I do want to thank staff. Took us a while to get through this application process, there were a lot of things to work through at the front end of the application, and we do appreciate the time and effort that staff put in that, so we thank them. We also thank Planning Commission for their continued support and deliberation when they made a recommendation of approval. The application before you this evening, as indicated, consists of a 130-unit independent senior living facility. It'll be located on 6.7 acres, and it's located on the south side of Park Overlook Drive at the first turnabout when you come in off east, heading east off of Grange Hall Road. It is a senior age-restricted community, so it'll be a 55 and over community. There are 130 proposed units for this project, again, senior independent living units. Of those, the vast majority are going to be single resident units. There are gonna be 105 single resident units with 25 double-bedroom units. The site itself, it's gonna have a town center feel to it. There's gonna be 9,000 square feet plus or minus of dedicated space, and within that town center, you'll hear more about this during Mr. Anderson's presentation, but essentially, the town square offers, or town center offers, a unique experience, if you will, for the residents. They can go, there's a coffee bistro, there's common space, and it provides an opportunity for them to mingle, if you will, amongst themselves, and also enjoy some of the amenities of the project. The proposed design of the site, from a site layout standpoint, meets or exceeds, in many cases, far exceeds the setbacks and buffer requirements within the zoning code. From a parking standpoint, as you would anticipate with an age-restricted community, parking needs are a little bit less than what they would be in a traditional apartment type of development. Some of that information was provided within the staff report, which you will likely hear more from Mr. Burkett on that. We do exceed ADA parking requirements. That's not only standard ADA parking requirements, but those that are additionally imposed by the city. So with the needs of this being a senior independent living facility, the developer is obviously sensitive to potential ADA needs with that. From a landscaping standpoint, the site's pretty extensively landscaped. Some conditions were added as part of the Planning Commission process to add some additional landscaping, some additional trees to the site, and the applicant's agreeable with those. And lastly, the applicant's had an opportunity to review the recommendations of Planning Commission, which are contained within the proposal before you this evening, and are agreeable with those. So at this point in time, I'm sure you're more interested in hearing from others than I, so I'm gonna turn this over to Dave Anderson, again, with AB Partners and Homestead America, who will speak again to the operations and development of the site.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thanks all for having me. My name's Dave Anderson. I'm with Homestead Companies in Columbus, Ohio. Part of those companies are Homestead America, Homestead U., and Homestead Construction. Homestead America is where we own, develop, and manage apartment communities, primarily in central Ohio and Columbus Market. We've got about 2,000 units in our portfolio. Homestead U. is the student housing division of the Homestead Companies. We have about 3,000 units, 9,000 beds, that we developed, managed, and own. And Homestead Construction is the actual builder of the products that we, that we own. We are getting into Homestead Senior Living now. This will be our third project with Homestead Senior Living, and like Mr. Montgomery said, it's 130-unit independent living for seniors 55 and over. The concept of the village, in Homestead Village, is the 9,000-square-foot amenity space, which really, it houses the fitness center. What we're really trying, and it's fairly new concept, but what we're really trying to do is encourage residents to come to the village and spend most of their day in the village, whether it's playing cards in the card room, playing billiards in the billiards room, there's a fitness room, there's a dog park with a dog wash, there's a meditation room, a post office, a bank, a grocery experience, really, everything that you would need is part of the village experience. There's 130 units, 105 of those are one-bedroom, one baths, and the remaining 25 are two-bedroom, two baths. This is often existing sister property in Westerville, Ohio, just north of Columbus, on the northeast side of Columbus, called Hampton Woods. We've owned that for several years and have had great success. It's been very well received by the market, and occupancy rates there are averaged 98% over the last three or four years. So it's a product that's been very well received, and we think it's gonna be great here in Beaver Creek.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We'll get to the questions if you're finished. We'll get some questions a little later.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, Bill Andrews is also gonna come up and talk a little bit about the building itself and some of the architectural features.
All right.
Good evening. Good evening, Bill Andrews, Andrews Architects, Dublin, Ohio. Dave covered the high points of the project, I think, very well. I think, too, the architecture, what has been presented to the city to this point in time is a traditional architecture that has been vetted carefully with the active senior communities here in, in the Ohio area. And with a little bit of gray hair on my head, I can kind of speak to that point a bit, but the active senior population is a very vital population, as you have here in your city, and these are folks that are gonna make a life choice to move somewhere that is comfortable and very safe, and also has a social aspect that they can take advantage of. It's a place where they can literally, in a sense, go downtown without having to leave the building itself. So those have been careful points that we brought into the project, along with the fit and finish and the general architecture. And just for your perusal, I know this is a zoning compliance vote that seemed, but I just want to share with you maybe a little quick sketch of. Excuse the drama of passing a piece of paper. This little sketch suggests what the town square can be, and that's exactly, it's literally down to the piece of furniture, how it's gonna be appointed for the folks, very comfortable and safe for that age, for that population. And be glad to entertain any questions you might have later.
All right, thank you.
And with that, we are concluding our presentation. We do thank your time and attention to this, and respectfully request approval of the site plan application. Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Burkett.
Evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The case you have before you is PUD 06-3. It's the fourth specific site plan of this PUD. It's the fourth specific site plan of this PUD, the Homestead Village Senior Community Apartments. Again, as the applicant stated a few times, they're looking to build 130-unit age-restricted senior living apartments on a little over six and a half acres. Again, this is located in northern Beaver Creek, just east of the intersection of Park Overlook Drive and Grange Hall Road. This is all part of a 27-acre PUD, and they're talking about the six and a half-plus acres that are here in the southeast corner of that PUD, so it's just southeast of the roundabout, the first roundabout, as Mr. Montgomery pointed out, off of Grange Hall Road. Again, the site is currently vacant. There is some pine trees and some decent trees along the southern property line, and there's some, there's some old vegetation scattered throughout the northern part of the property, but it's mostly vacant and sparsely landscaped, a landscaped property as of right now. Again, this property was originally zoned in 2006 as for duplex condos, and in 2013, it was, the northern part was rezoned so that there could be, Liberty Nursing could be built, the, and then on the south side, then it was rezoned again in 2017 for First and Main, and that didn't come to fruition, but part of that amended zoning stated that retirement communities were allowed use within this portion of the PUD, and the way we define in our zoning code, retirement communities are any housing for the elderly or anything that includes age restriction and, as defined by the U.S. Code, which states 55 and up. So what they're proposing this evening isn't allowed in appropriate use within the PUD itself. Seen here is the proposed site plan, and what they're proposing is one access point, which would be off of the roundabout, and that's going to be located here, so you'll come up to Access Drive, and then there'll be two-way access around, throughout the site and around the building. So you'll come in and you can either go your left, and there's a drop-off area in front of the main door, and then there's also a bypass area. I asked about that, and they said just, just in case there was, you know, you needed a drop-off, there's already somebody parked, and there was a secondary bypass area. But the main parking field for the residents will be back here. They don't anticipate too many employees, so, you know, residents will park on the front of the building as well, but, you know, the bulk of the parking is in the rear of the property. They do meet the 50-foot setback requirements that are established in the amended zoning, and they also meet the minimum parking requirements for both this type of use, as well as our enhanced ADA requirements. That's called out specifically in our zoning code, so no concerns with the parking. One thing that we had them add in early on, and you, I was happy to see that they were actually excited to add it, too, was this sidewalk extension. As you know, the area itself, you know, there's a lot of sidewalks in area that we built, the city's built over the last, you know, decade, and so you can get to, from this area, you can get to the mall, you can get all the way to, to a very far distance away, so I think that having direct access, even a simple, small access point to this whole system was important. So they were, they were really compliant and happy to add that point, so because of an amenity, because of all the shops, the mall, the movie theater, restaurants, all in the area, you know, it's important as an amenity. So they do have that added sidewalk. I just want to give a, this is kind of an easier way to see it, but the building's in the center, and there's a lot of green space, you know, there's green space to the south to help buffer the residential, single-family residential neighborhood to the south, and there's green space on, around all sides of the building. They do meet the minimum requirements for open space on the site, and actually, as part of this application, they're going to be dedicating about one and a quarter acres of the land that's here to the north, well, that's northeast of the site, this, this area, and I'll show you on a slide here in a few seconds, but there'd be dedicating, as part of their required parkland dedication, be dedicating that to the city, because this area over here is actually city park now, so we'll be able to add on to our existing city park reserve. Seen here are the architectural elevations. The majority of the, the front of the building and on portions of the rear of the building is a white brick. You can see it's, the building itself is, sorry, it's 244 feet long, 300 feet wide, and about 35 feet tall. They do have gray cement board siding as, as a good portion of the building, and then a stone base around the, at the building as well. This kind of gives, yeah, this gives you a better 3D version of the building, just to give you a perspective of how it would look out here in front of and along Park Overlook Drive. And one thing, you could see this, this brick base sits along the front of the building, and then they have it along the, the front sections of the building. We wanted, and then they have it like a foot tall around the rest of the building. We wanted to add and have a condition that they add that on the rear of the building, these corners, to kind of give end caps to the rear of the building, just so, just so that, you know, just to give it a back of the building, you know, or, well, to prevent it from having a defined rear of the building, but to give it four-sided architectural features. So, you know, we, we have that condition that these four corners in the back have the, that brick be added to the first floor. They're proposing to extend the existing detention pond that's out on the corner of Park Overlook and Grange Hall to help accommodate any stormwater detention runoff from this site, so there won't be any additional runoff that would affect any of the neighbors or anything like that. It'll be all contained within the, the exercise pond that's going to be out along Park Overlook and Grange Hall. As the applicant stated, you know, they did provide a landscape plan that is, it's, it's a pretty good landscape plan, it shows a lot of, a diverse mixture of evergreen trees and shrubs and grasses and trees along the road, and a good, a double row of six-foot evergreens along the southern property line, that again, help, they're, they're proposing to maintain the, the existing trees along that southern property line, but because they, those existing trees can be sparse in some areas, we, we had them add in to a double row of six-foot pine trees along that southern property line. But one thing we did, are asking them to add is additional trees along the perimeter of the building, and along the outside of that building, because it's a fairly tall building, and we want to help blend that in with the area, and adding those trees along the base of the building will help, you know, bring that building down to scale, I think, adding that extra landscaping. A few of the other conditions in your proposed motion, one, a temporary grading fence around the area, so they're proposing to preserve a lot of this area as woodland, and we want to make sure that that's preserved, so we don't want to put it on a plan or anything as, as no-cut zones or anything like that, that can be problematic in, in the future, five, 10 years from now, if it tree dies, nobody's allowed to cut it because it's a no-cut zone, but if we had a label as a temporary no-grading, then while they're building, it's, it's just protected at that time. All building mechanical equipment is to be protected or screened, so if they have the RTUs on the, I'm sorry, the HVAC units on the ground, and they'll put landscaping around it and make sure that those don't stand out. Because of the residential properties to the south, any of the pole-mounted fixtures be 16-foot tall max, and they, they are within landscape islands, and they are to be shined straight down and not, the full cutoff fixtures and not bleed out or anything like that. And again, because of the residential properties to the south, we want to make sure that they have their construction hours be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. Again, the amount of parkland that they're required to dedicate is a little bit beyond the 1.25 acres that they are going to be able to dedicate, so they're going to have to also give some park fees as well. So it's just a formula based on the number of residences they anticipate with, by the number of units, so, you know, they will have to pay some parkland fees along with the parkland dedication. They're also going to need to pay impact fees, so that final number will be, you know, reviewed and approved, and we'll get those fees and dedication and all that before we release any permit for this. And they're allowed one, one ground sign with the, the site, and that can't be more than five feet tall. Just wanted to give you an idea of the, about one and a quarter acres that we would be getting with this. The green is what we own now as a city reserve. We got it a little bit when Lofts Two was built, and then we'd be adding that one and a quarter to that, so that would give us some additional good frontage along Park Overlook Drive. Staff and Planning Commission both recommend approval of the applicant's requests, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone present tonight that would like to address council on this application, please come forward, give us a name and address. We ask that you keep your remarks to three minutes, or ask for some friends to donate time to you.
Okay. I'm Alice France at 3790 Ellsworth Drive. The only problem with this is, as you know, we have the base, 675, the mall, it's too congested now. We can't get out in Butterfield, we have to go to Kemp, then we go out in Norwood, then we got Kemp we can't get around to. It's just too congested in that area, and we can't get in or out, so...
Which street are you on?
We're on Butterfield, we're on Ellsworth, which would be right behind it. And we have to go out Butterfield to go, well, we have the base, which is lunchtime, and after, we can't do anything, then we have the mall, we have 675 traffic, so we're kind of congested right there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Frank Fitchak for 308 Kemp Road. I just have a question. It was unclear to me if the 6.7 acres includes the 1.2 that he's given away.
I see a nod, head nodding over here. Yes, sir, it does.
So basically, you're talking about 130 units and 5.2 acres. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council? Please, come on up.
I didn't, Bill Sheeman, 3971 Laban. I didn't review this plan ahead, but having seen the presentation, it looks to me like alternate ingress egress for emergency purposes should be discussed. I mean, if something happens on that road, they're cut off. It could be a grassed area with pavement, but there ought to be some kind of minimal disaster planning. I don't know if staff looked at alternate ingress egress. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else tonight? In that case, we will close the public hearing, and we will have council input, and we'll try to answer some of these questions. Councilmember Littler, would you like to start?
Thank you, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first, I want to thank you for bringing this project to Beaver Creek. I, I think it's excellent. We do need some, you know, we do have patio homes, but I think we need some living facilities like this for 55 and over, for those of us that do want to downsize at some point. I like the amenities feature. I didn't see tennis courts, but that's okay. But I do think that, you know, as we grow older in our population, that we do want that. I did, my concerns were the first, that the access, I was concerned about that and the egress, I wrote that down. I don't see, and we've had this discussion before, when we, when we've had properties like this, so if staff could address that. And then my second question along with that is... As far as the roundabout and the people that are, I mean, you can't honestly get down Grange Hall right now, and since a lot of people now know about the Park Overlook, you have a lot of people cutting through there now to get over to North Fairfield, and I noticed it, because, I'll be honest, I did it, when North Fairfield had all that construction.
Sure.
And so not only I noticed a significant input in that, I also have friends that live right behind this particular area across the street, and you do have a lot more traffic, so maybe that's something we could add to our plan, because eventually, as this grows with, with the base, and, and we do still have another property over there, I think, you know, it's something we really do need to look at, because right now, you can't, you cannot turn right or left at certain times of the day.
Onto Grange Hall.
Onto Grange Hall, and I, I know that just from driving through there myself, so if we could just see, well, if you have, if we have a plan of action, first, I'd like to know about the egress, because that's extremely important.
Right.
And then the second thing is a plan of action maybe for the future, because we do know we have another parcel over there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the future plan of action, that's something, you know, I'm sure that our engineer and staff internally can discuss in terms of our long-term plans. In terms of the immediate access or a secondary access, you know, we routed this out to the fire department on, earlier on, and they were comfortable with, you know, Park Overlook Drive. I can reroute it to them again and talk to them about grass pavers out here. They're not really big fans of grass pavers themselves, or a secondary access point, and the grading here is, I think they were concerned about the, I know the grading is way too steep out here to get anything, but, you know, they weren't, they weren't concerned with the single access point when we routed to them the first time.
Well, and, but the significant issue for me would be, you only do have this way in, and if there's a problem, or even if there's a crash down here, it's, it's going to be a problem. So I don't, for example, if they were trying to get in from Park Overlook, and you have people leaving the property, it's going to be bottlenecked. So I, I think it would be nice if they would just look at it again. I don't particularly like pavers either, but you still need to have an opportunity because if those people are coming out or there's an issue, they're all going to be coming out the same way.
Okay. I mean, I could...
At least that's, that's my appearance, that's how it appears to me. I could be wrong.
I will, I'll certainly talk to Randy about the, or Mr. Grogen about the, the concerns. I know that they, they just, he didn't have those same concerns when they, when we routed to them the first time, but I'll definitely have him take a second look at it.
You never know what type of emergency will develop.
Sure.
And we just, we want to be prepared for that, because, you know, that's 130 units, correct? Is that what, Mr. Fitchak? Yeah, 130 units, so, you know, that's a lot of individuals trying to, in a certain area.
Okay.
Councilmember Rushen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the applicant. My only question, and I come from not having too much knowledge on this, so rely on staff. Is it correct that the dumpsters are on the south, the southeast corner of the property?
Those would be down, down here, yes.
My only question would be, as of late, we all know, we've been receiving several complaints from residents in regards to the timing of trash pickup, as well as the location. What is the distance approximately? I probably don't have it off the top of your head, but do you have an approximate distance from the dumpster locations to the closest property approximately?
Well, I know that this is a 50-foot line right here. Hold on a second, let me pull up where I've got. Give me one second, sorry.
You're fine.
If this is, these are the dumpsters, this is a 50-foot line.
It's almost 100 feet.
I'd say 100 feet probably from the property lines.
And we would venture that'd be more than adequate, I mean, in terms of...
I could, we can also restrict the times, too.
I know we've done that in the past. I know...
We restrict it, we can't enforce it.
Right.
We couldn't.
I think it's something, you know, northworthy to potentially look into, some potential as some sort of, you know, add-in to the residence. May not be something that we necessarily are able to ourselves, you know, but, you know, like anything else, complaint-driven, it's something that potentially, I think you have experience with that yourself, Mr. Upton.
Every week.
Right. So just something to maybe venture. I don't know if the applicant or staff would be amenable to that, but if there's considerable distance, perhaps it may not be an issue to begin with.
Yeah, I mean, these will be, these are going to be, you know, the brick or masonry structure. We require the enclosures to be made out of the same structure, same material as the building, 100 feet. I can't imagine that they would be emptied as much as a commercial, a general commercial building. I mean, or something you would have along a commercial corridor or anything like that as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Van.
What is the unit size, do you know?
Um, I think I had that right here, actually.
The architect, the architect can tell us, okay.
I had that up. Most of them are 500 square feet. I know that's kind of, I mean, I can't remember what the exact average was, I think I put it in my staff report, but I thought it was somewhere around 650.
But the majority of them are about 500.
Well, the, the max would be 750. Well, the, the max would be 750, too, but yeah, the majority of them are 500, little over 500 square feet.
So I'm impressed that in Columbus, they're all occupied already. So that's good. How much, the parking evidently, so if there's 130 units, how many parking spaces are there?
I believe it was 100?
Yeah, it was 100.
Yeah, we just showed, from their similar development in Hampton Woods, the one, you know, they talked about is their sister development with this one, a majority of people, or not a majority, but a good portion of people don't even have vehicles, or don't, or don't work full-time, or anything like that, so. And really, senior apartments, retirement communities only require one, or, I'm sorry, two cars for every three units. So they were only required to have 90, and they've got 100.
That concerns me, I'm gonna have to do some thinking on that, because I, that, that caught me by surprise, because most of the people that I know that are in their 80s or 90s, or, you know, when they turn 90s, then they stop driving, but, you know, there's a lot of people that are driving. And there are also people who would come to visit, so you need visitor parking.
Sure.
And so, I'm gonna have to, between now and the next reading, think about that and do some research on it, because...
This is a...
Oh, it's a one-time reading?
Right.
Oh, well, then that concerns me. It concerns me greatly, because I think an awful lot of, of seniors have guests come, or they have a car of their own, or, I don't know, so I'll ponder that while everybody else asks questions.
Here are the numbers, like in their other development, 41% of the residents didn't have a vehicle. So, just to give you an idea of the percentages, and that's, that's no guarantee that 41% of the people of this wouldn't have one, but I'm just giving you an idea of the numbers that we're, we're looking at.
I could see that in a municipal area, but this is a, this is pretty rural. Yeah, but anyway, we'll, we'll go on.
And then, I, I like the, the community space, all the different attributes that are in there. I think that's well, well-designed. I've, I've visited facilities like this and, and other places in Ohio, and it looks like it's good, good to have the hairdresser and the grocery store and all those different Community rooms for their singing group, and community rooms for whatever else, you know, all kinds of things. I guess for now, but that's it. But I am, I agree with the, with the access, because with, with the aging population, if, if there was an accident and the, the whole street was blocked off, then how does everybody else get around? I mean, it, it really is something to think about. And, and as I, when I've driven on, through that roundabout, it's, it's a little tight already, so all you do, to do is have it blocked off, and, and it's gonna be problematic, so...
Counselor member up.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. Couple of my comments have, have been addressed, but one I did have, I'm, we've got this, this new tree committee. Have, they had any input on any of our specific site plans recently, and specifically this one, on if there's some trees that we might recommend for some of the, the greener areas?
Frankly, not this particular type plan, I can certainly forward it to them before. I still have an option to do that, because I have, in the condition, it says the final plan should be approved by staff before, so I can certainly forward that to them.
Just thought, I think that committee right now is just compiling a list of trees that might be safe or approved for Beaver Creek, but...
Yeah, I've seen that list.
Something to think about, you know, as we get more of these specific site plans in the near future, let's utilize some of our resources there.
Certainly.
That's all.
Counselor member current.
Thank you, Mayor.
I had a question on the south side of that project. Is, is there a possibility of a, of a berm, kind of a hill, kind of a screen for the residents who live on the south side of the project? I know they made the effort here, which has already been mentioned, the trees, but is there any possibility of a, of a berm that you could have there?
I'll let the applicant speak more to the, the grading aspect to that, but I, I think if you start doing that, you would take away the existing trees.
Oh, I see.
And, because in order to grade, you have to, you have to, you have to shave off the exist, all the existing vegetation. And you really don't like to do that, if we can help, because I just think that that holds a lot better than a hill would.
Huh, okay.
If that's something, I can have the applicant talk about grading that, I mean...
Thank you.
They have a lot of hill here, out front, and they have some, some grading back here, but they didn't, they didn't touch this no, no-cut zone area, well, not no-cut zone, no grading zone.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Ted. Hi. Vice Mayor Garcia.
Thank you, yes. I think I kinda would just echo everybody. I think this is really wonderful to have in our community. I think the plan looks great. I liked all the amenities inside the village itself. Kind of would like that in my own residence. It's really nice to have everything just right there for you. A question that we did have was about public transportation. Was there any type of transportation authority or anything for this type of village community?
There isn't, they, I, they don't have their own busing, or bus in particular of their own. I mean, obviously, Green Cats is something that can service them if they, if the residents so choose.
That was gonna be my follow-up question.
Yeah.
That was gonna be my follow-up, is to see if maybe Green Cats or someone could...
Yeah, obviously, yeah, I mean, that's, obviously, they can make arrangements with some of them if they needed to.
And then, is there, the one thing we haven't talked about was, you know, affordability. I didn't know if there was a price point on some of this, or...
I'd have to talk to them about the price point.
Yeah, regarding affordability, and really, the amenities also, there is no affordability component, so there's no, it's not government subsidized, Section 8 housing, there's none of that. You know, when you talk, when you ask about transportation, what services are provided, what we are really trying to do, and what's worked very well at the sister property, is not including things that are very expensive, like transportation, that only X percent of the people use. What we're really trying to do is keep the rents lower, because when you study the aging demographics, there's just people that just can't afford $2,000, $3,000, or $4,000 a month in rent. And so what we're trying to do is keep this price point around the $900 range per month. And that really does include your full lifestyle. It has everything. Somebody, I think, mentioned the hairdresser, which I failed to mention in my presentation, but the hairdresser's there, the nail person is there. There's a, there's health and wellness people that come in to do blood pressures and those types of checks. The fitness center is included. So when you really take a look at everything that's included, it's, it's going to be a great value. We find it to be a great value at the sister property in Columbus, Ohio, and the reason it's a great value is because we don't burden the residents with the services that not everybody gets to enjoy.
Well, I think that, I appreciate you answering that question for me. I think, again, I, you can sign me up when I hit 55, I guess, is the age, but I think it all looks great, and I'm, I'm really happy it's coming here to the city.
I appreciate that, thank you for your support.
Just, if you don't mind, stay up there a minute, if you're, if you're finished.
I'm done, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, just to get back to the parking, and your, your other unit that's in Columbus, is it within walking distance to a lot of things?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
And you still only have 41%?
Yes.
With automobiles?
You know, what's interesting is our average age, although we're 55, we market to 55 and over, our average age there is 72. That's where they've gravitated to. You know, I think that there's still, even though, I mean, 55's not what it used to be 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago, and I think there are still so many people that...
70, not either.
But, you know, I, I do think that the, that it, that there's people that want to stay in their homes where they are now, and it's not surprising to me at all, having built these before, that 72 is the average age.
Yeah, that doesn't surprise me. It just surprises me that only 41% of, of the units would have a vehicle. But anyway, that, you, you have the experience, and staff seems to be adequate with that. I do believe we need the emergency access of some sort. I don't care if it, it may even have to come through the park land that you're talking, as long as it's, as long as it's some way, because, because of the roundabout primarily, if we had a plat that had 130 houses in it, we would have two ways in and out. So I think in this particular case, using that same logic, that I think somewhere along the line, we've got to figure out a way, it doesn't have to be visible in so much, but it has to be something that the fire department and police department knows where it's at and how it can get in. That's gonna be determined a lot by the grading. I wouldn't be upset myself if the grading, you know, if it did come through the park, even if it stayed this part of the park. I'm not concerned with that overly, but I do think we have to have that other access. The other thing I had, and it's not really been brought up too much, I think Counselor member Kern tried a little bit to talk about the berming, and I don't know that we need a berm so much, but you have a long stretch of that section coming off of the traffic circle that's headed south, that's gonna have headlights. And so I want to be, I hope staff is comfortable that the headlight is coming in, heading south, is not gonna burden those one or two houses down there that are right at the other side of it. Get the one back there with the color, it shows the houses below it. There you go. So you have, you have one, and then two probably beside it, but those two houses, when the traffic's coming off the traffic circle and coming in...
That's over, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But they're gonna have headlights shining right in the back of their houses if there's not enough of the vegetation. So, I don't know, I don't want to try to decide what needs to be there, but I just want staff to be sure they know that something is there that will allow some blockage. Are we gonna get a little help here?
Yeah.
Please.
I'm Steve Law from the Ranky Group, 959 Congress Park Drive. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Just, I can address a couple of these questions that have come up. First of all, with regard to the headlights, the way the grading works on this site, you come in off of the traffic circle, and if you look, you can see the lines on the driveway there, the grade comes up. So really, as you come off of that, your headlights are gonna be pointing down. The reason we had to do that is in order to make sure that the site balanced with dirt, and you didn't have to haul off too much dirt, you have to set the site up a little higher. So the way the driveways configured coming in, you come in lower, so I think, just the way the grading is, it's gonna block some of those headlights coming out.
Right there, it's a curve, sure. It's a very furthest south curve is my really, real concern, is that area in there, is it, is the elevation...
So you've got, if you look at the grading there on the south side of that, that's in a, that's in a cut area there, so...
Okay, so you're down below the current grade?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, as far as the berm along the south side, really, when you, like Randy said, that the no-cut zone, we want to keep those trees. In order to make a berm in there, you would have to cut back to the property line, come up, go back down, and work with the grades, and it becomes kinda difficult, and I think it's counterproductive, you know?
But by the cutout, you're creating a berm that, in essence, anyway.
Right, exactly.
If you're gonna be lower.
As far as congestion and traffic, and really, it goes a little bit to the parking, when you look at, when you look at how many units this kind of facility generates compared to a normal apartment, it's significantly less. I did a quick study comparing with 130 single-family lots, and if you, the, the peak hour in the morning, a single family would have 103 cars coming out, okay? This one will have eight. Townhomes, 63 cars in the morning compared to eight for this. So really, what we've seen, and the Institute of Traffic Engineers has shown, is that this type of senior living just doesn't have the same kind of traffic, and people don't utilize cars as much, and that is confirmed by what they independently have with their units. So, you know, as to, as to how much traffic's gonna be added to Park Overlook and Grange Hall, this is really a good fit for people concerned about traffic, because I don't think you're gonna have a much lower intensity of use. And I also wanted to address the secondary access. Now, staff has talked about it, but we've, Ranky Group, we've been involved in the, in the development of this over the years, and these traffic circles from the city have always been, you know, we've been restricted to only using the traffic circles, and some of the reasons for that is, it limits the speed coming down Park Overlook, you generally slow down to about 20 miles an hour when you go into a traffic circle, but it also has a big, a large capacity to move traffic. And if you look on this drawing here, that, that crosshatch there, you know, that is something you can drive over. So if there is an accident in the roundabout, you actually have more room than just the pavement. Another feature I wanted to point out is that, you know, because of fire protection, we have, we have this drive, and it wraps all the way around. When we were discussing some of the other projects, on this property even, you know, we had a one-way on one side of the building. This is two-way all the way around, so, you know, there's pretty good circulation access, and I think that's why the fire department's okay with it. As far as the secondary access, you know, I think it would be kind of an emergency thing, but I don't think the city wants a cut in, in Park Overlook. And I think, when you look at the capacity of the traffic, the roundabout, I'm not sure it'd really be necessary, but I'd leave that to staff. And I guess that's, that's about it. Does she have any other questions?
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor, would you have anything else?
The one thing I just wanted to mention was, I know we keep saying that this is based off the sister community in Columbus, but really, it's Westerville, which is much more suburban than Columbus is when you think about things in walking distance, so it's very much similar to the community we have in Beaver Creek, is my understanding. So I, you know, we're throwing out figures that are similar to what they're already seeing in Columbus, and I just want to reinforce that it's very close to what we have here in Beaver Creek. It's not very, you know, urban like Columbus. So I think that might help some of the comparisons, so that was all.
All right. As, I know the traffic was brought up as an issue, and, you know, hopefully, being a senior community, this will, will not generate traffic at rush hours. This development is paying a, an impact fee, so when the traffic warrants a light at Grange Hall, then the, it would be our duty and our responsibility to put that in with the impact fees that they're paying. And the Park Overlook was built as a major connector, so it's, it's not really a cut-through. It was designed to take pressure off of Pentagon and that sort of thing. But I do think that we're probably, and I don't, not to engineer, but I would, I would think, on the traffic I've seen, we won't be too far away from needing a traffic light there at some point in the near future. All right. So, any other general comments?
The park there is just hiking paths. It's, it's a wooded, wooded area, and people just walk through it, and the seniors are gonna like that, too, and you may want to plan how your paths go out from the facility, because walking is good.
Before we ask for a motion, I'm, I'm comfortable with the fire, I would just like the fire department to take one last look at an emergency access versus trying to make it a condition. You've heard the other comments that I think are, that staff can cover on their own before they're intent, issue the permit. So, do I have a motion?
So move.
Should read it.
Oh, you gotta read that.
No, you have to read it if you're going to.
Read, move for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of a specific site plan for the Homestead Village. On the basis that City Council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials and modification, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and the criteria for the specific site plan as per 158.066 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, which there are 23, and I further move that this motion, with all conditions, be fully recorded in the minutes of this council's meeting.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve PUD 06-3, specific site plan... I have a motion and a second to approve PUD 06-3, specific site plan number four.
More question. Are any meals provided?
No, there are not.
Okay.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. We don't need a roll call on this, do we?
No.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public hearing, to 20,000, or 2020 tax budget.
This is the public hearing on the tax budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2020.
Hello, hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm going to be presenting the 2020 tax budget for your approval this evening. I could say it before the desk. At the top. So the county auditor requires that the 2020 tax budget be filed by July 19th, and the tax budget is prepared by us, and it is in compliance with the O R C. Our tax budget shows that the estimated revenues generated by the city's current voted and non-voted tax levies are necessary to maintain city services. The tax budget process starts by determining the estimated cost of maintaining current levels of service. Estimated revenues, expenditures, and fund balances are updated for all of the city's operating capital and trust funds. Adjustments were made for inflationary factors, contractual obligations, and capital expenditures. Revenues generated from property tax levies are estimated by the county auditor. You will notice in the tax budget that property tax revenues are estimated to be greater than they were for 2019. The estimates provided by the auditor have to be used in this tax budget. All other revenues are based on current and historic trends. At this stage, it's typical for the tax budget to reflect fund balances below the 20% threshold. Council will be provided a balanced budget in November reflecting minimum fund balance requirements. Starting in August, estimates will be refined, bringing expenditures in line with available resources. Each department or division will review their budget and make the necessary adjustments, and revised budgets will be reviewed with and by City Council, and then finalized and presented for adoption in December. So in summary, the tax budget proves that the city's needs exceed resources, and all current taxes and levies are necessary. This tax budget, as presented, shows several reductions in fund balances that will be addressed during the budget process over the next few months. Lastly, budget hearings with the county auditor will be set at a future date. The final 2020 budget will be within fund balance guidance, guidelines as established by City Council. Staff recommends approval of resolution 19-37, which adopts the 2020 tax budget. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. Any discussion, questions? Before that, we have a public hearing, though, don't we? So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present that would like to address council on this, on this budget? Anyone at all? We will move on then to council input. Anyone have any comments, please?
Yeah, Your Honor, just a question, do you have any idea at all how much property tax we're going to lose as a result of the, of the tornado? I mean, how, I, I know we've talked about it, heard conversations, but you have any idea?
I don't know of a dollar amount. I don't know if Mr. Casera is aware of...
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Anyone else?
Go ahead. I was just saying, thanks for the presentation. This is the first step in many as we go through the budget process, but this is the part that involves the county and us telling the county this is what we need from them. So here we go for the 2020 budget. Woo!
I wanted to thank Teresa and Mr. Casera and the Finance Department for everything they do, especially with our audit, so you guys just do a wonderful job. So thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Miss, Mr. Landem brings up a good point to remind us that with levy funding, we, we, that levy's for a dollar amount, regardless of how many houses are on it. So where we all lose money is on inside millage, but not on voted millage. Just means your taxes and my taxes are just, might go up a little bit, because the same, should be the same dollar amount. Okay, thank you very much. It's going to be an interesting year, budget time, just to figure all this out with the expenses for the tornado, and it's going to be tough.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further comment, I would move for approval of resolution 19-37.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 19-37. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Littoral?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Upton?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Moving on, next item is ordinance 19-11.
This is a third reading of an ordinance amending the current thoroughfare plan as approved by resolution 82-3 and amended by ordinances 89-19, 93-61, 94-55, and 12-22, and the approved bike wave plan as approved by resolution 99-12 and amended by ordinance 12-22, be replaced with a thoroughfare plan 2019 update as described in Exhibit A dated June 1st, I'm sorry, June 4th, 2019.
Thank you. This ordinance was sponsored by Councilmember Littoral. But before I ask for a motion, is there any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. Motion to contend, or a motion to approve 1911.
Second.
I have a motion and approve, and a second to approve ordinance 19-11. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is resolution 19-38.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and file with the District 11 Public Works Integrating Committee an application on behalf of the city of Beaver Creek for aid in partly financing the costs of capital improvement projects pursuant to the programs administered by the Ohio Public Works Commission as amended, to execute contract agreements with the state of Ohio, authorizing the city manager to perform all acts and execute all documents they consider necessary to fulfill the city of Beaver Creek's obligation under said grant applications and corresponding agreements, and to comply with all relevant local, state, and federal legal requirements, and to provide assurances and additional information as required by the Ohio Public Works Commission.
Thank you. I think it took longer to read than the explanation.
Absolutely.
Please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. For the past several months, staff has been actively working with the city of Kettering on a joint project to improve the section of County Line Road between Veil Drive and Dorothy Lane. The project essentially will widen about 3,200 linear feet of roadway from a three-lane pavement section to a five-lane pavement section, and it'll match this pavement width immediately to the north and to the south. During that time, both Beaver Creek and Kettering have been active in applying for grant money to help finance these improvements, where to date combined, we've received a little bit over $2 million in federal monies toward, towards construction. In an effort to further reduce our, our share of the construction costs, we're recommending that we apply for Ohio Public Works Commission funding to help, again, defray and reduce our costs for this work. The application, we're proposing a grant request of $586,500. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, very good. Do we have any questions?
Just our continued thank you for all of the work that you do, the collaboration with other entities, as well as looking for those grant dollars that assist the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve resolution 19-38.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 19-38. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item's council time. How about we start on the left this, this time, and Councilmember Curran?
Well, really enjoyed the Fourth of July parade. It was a lot of fun. People seemed to be very involved in activities in the Rotary Park program. It was really exciting. I, I just thought it was really tremendous, and I congratulate all the folks involved, particularly U E S.
Councilmember Upton?
Yeah, I'd like to echo those thoughts. I thoroughly enjoyed what is my final Fourth of July parade as a council member, so that was great, and appreciate all the parks members, the park board, I saw them actively out there, helping coordinate volunteers and, and the floats and everybody else, so appreciate them giving up their Fourth of July, you know, to, to play host and do their, their part there. Also thank U E S for the sponsorship and everyone's efforts down at the park. I understand the Fourth of July fireworks, while I wasn't able to attend myself, were, was a great show. I'll let some others chime in on that. But then addition to that, you know, our concert series at LaFino Park continues to be a success. I see lots of commentary, and I hear lots of feedback about it. Saw someone giving an 8.5 on this most recent concert out of 10, so...
Pretty good.
Good numbers there. But with, with that, that's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van?
I did walk to the top of the Rotary Park and look at the crowd. Do we have an estimate of how many people were at the park? It was full. It was really impressive, and I know that all the way along Beaver Valley and at Ritter's and at the high school and other places, they were all watching also, so I'm really glad that we continued at Rotary and the, the, this family production with the parade and everything for the residents. So thanks to U E S, it was really a good, a good push on their side, and I think the residents really appreciated it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just echo the comments of previous council members on July 4th celebration. Thank you to staff and the Parks Committee who were able to put that together and give us a great celebration while they continue to work on a holiday. I do want to recognize Fairfield Commons for their celebration as well. They had another, I think, third annual celebration that this year was.
Third time, yes.
Third annual celebration, so congrats to Fairfield Commons on that. And the only thing else I wanted to give a reminder to is next Friday, not this coming Friday, but next Friday is the next Party on Patio at the golf course, so I just encourage members of the public to attend for a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Littoral?
Just wanted to echo all the other council members' comments, but I really, along with U E S, I mean, they are truly our community partner. They have been with us for, since we had the budget, budgetary issues, and they have really, I think, inspired everyone to, as Councilmember Van said, keep, keep it as a family function and, at Rotary Park. So I know there was lots of other people that live around up there on Hunter's Ridge that were having their own patio parties, and so I think that's wonderful to say. I also think we, I want to say thank you to Decoy Art Studio and Beaver Creek Chamber. They also were involved, the school with the marching band. Paul was, I was a honored guest to judge some of the floats. Our superintendent, Paul was there. Chamber has a representative, so it was very nicely done. We had several, and it's going to be in the Gazette, or Gazette, sorry, Beaver Creek paper, and she's going to have all of the judges with the floats and the kids and stuff, so it was really well done, just a fabulous opportunity.
All right. Vice Mayor Garcia?
Thank you. I guess I would just echo everyone's praise for the Fourth of July parade. It was really great. I know going through the parade this year, it seemed like it grew in crowd size this year than last year, so it was great to see so many people lining the streets for the parade. It was really a fun time. I think my son was not as interested as I thought he would be, just waking up from a nap and being in a parade, but I was very excited for him, and also to...
We were all interested in him, though.
Right. I would also like to say thank you to everyone who entered a float in this year's Fourth of July contest and parade. It was really great to see all of the floats and everybody's participation, and on a separate note, I hope everybody enjoys the All-Star break over the next couple of days in the Home Run Derby tonight in my home ballpark of Jacobs Field, so I'm definitely going home to watch that tonight, so, but thank you.
All right. And I believe Councilmember Upton had something to add.
Yeah, one more thing, I forgot I'd be remiss. A week ago, the city had the opportunity to play host to Senator Rob Portman with a little community update for, you know, the tornado and recovery efforts. Had representatives obviously from Senator Portman's office, Congressman Turner's office, Representative Peralas, Senator Hackett, and a number of other elected officials, but as well as many of the committees and organizations such as the S B A and FEMA, Be Hope, Chamber of Commerce, I think there's 35 different organizations represented in our chambers talking about the recovery efforts to give Senator Portman an update of what's going on. He was appreciative of that, he shared some thoughts and comments with us, and it sounds like he's going to go back to Washington and try to continue to push for FEMA dollars and additional recovery efforts, so thank you to Senator Portman for that.
Okay. All right.
It really has been nice that we've gotten attention from local, state, and federal people who can make a difference, so...
Yeah.
I agree. Thanks so much for, Rob Portman for coming, and, and for Turner's office for coming. I mean, they're paying attention, I really, I really value it, because sometimes we feel like they don't come to Beaver Creek, and so it's really nice to, to have them here. I would like to say one more thing. Did you notice that the, we do the thing at the Nutter, Nutter for the robots and the, so they sent a team for coding to Washington D.C., and, and two, two of the teams from Beaver Creek won.
Wow.
I mean, it's, it's just another, we've just got a lot of good stuff going on in Beaver Creek, it's just, it just is really fun to, and I've always appreciated it for my kids and my family and, and my neighborhood, but it is, we, we have a lot of good stuff going on.
We tend to take it for granted sometimes, yeah. All right, I'm going to continue just on the Portman issue, just a sec, a second. Senator Portman was, actually did respond a couple, to a couple of us and maybe everybody about how much he appreciated the input. Remind everybody that we're still not out of the woods. We still have, there's a process yet for the cities and the counties and the, to get compensation for what we're having to spend. That's not approved yet. That's part of a, a second step in the FEMA process. So the more we can keep our, our national representatives in, in communication, the better off we're going to be, but I do want to thank him for coming to Beaver Creek. But that, like I say, that's something that we've got to keep up, we really do. Zach mentioned the 8.5 scale for the band. Well, the band was called the Five at the LaFino Park, and why I don't know, is only four of them, but, but they're called, quote, Five, quote. And so maybe there's an invisible player somewhere. But they were very good, and I hope the, I hope Party on the Patio takes a look at them, maybe not this year, but next year. I think they would blend in real well on that, that event as well. What put it over the top, and Zach saw the Facebook post, I was boosting the scale based, based on somebody else's, but there was a young couple that was out there dancing right on Water's Edge, and they were just so talented and so happy. I mean, it was, it just made a whole new atmosphere along with the band, so it was just, I had to give the whole performance a good 8.5, and nobody ever gets a 10 from me anyway, so I mean, that's pretty good. But anyway, there's a lot happening, as everybody has said, and I think most of the things have been covered. We do have to stay on top where this tornado issue is not over. We've got to continue to get the message out about FEMA, about S B A. We've got to stay in communication with our representatives so that we get this FEMA reimbursement. We will, if you think budget's going to be tough, we better hope we know that we're going to get reimbursed by the time we get to budget time. Anyway, that's all I have, and so with that said, it's going to be the city manager's time.
All right, I'll, I'll be brief. Under construction, we have several projects, the North Fairfield Road, Res... The North Fairfield Road resurfacing is completed, all paving work. They'll still need to do the final pavings and markings and restoring some traffic signals back to the original timing of the loops over the next couple of weeks. Minimal traffic disruptions are expected for, as they complete that. They also will be doing, as you, you probably see it as you go by, they've already got in white paint around the manhole covers to get those adjusted as well. Old Mill Lane Bridge, that's begun on the superstructure replacement. This project is expected to take about 90 days to complete it. Noel Drive Storm Sewer, work is expected to begin next week on storm sewer improvements along Noel Drive, south of Kemp Road. While this work is in progress, some periodic closures of Noel Drive should be expected. This project take about 90 days to complete it as well. And Lilian Lane, the project extended Lilian Lane to Lakeview Drive has been completed, and a new roadway has been open to traffic, so that's good news. I think this was already mentioned, Party in Your Park, you got two of them coming up, Hunter's Ridge and CI Beaver Hall, for those that live in those neighborhood parks. Of course, anybody's welcome to come out to them, but usually these are the pocket parks for those in the neighborhood. But Hunter's Ridge, it's Friday, this Friday, July 12th at 5:30, and the CI Beaver Hall, for those in that neighborhood, at Highmont, Highmont Street, it's Friday, then following Friday, the 26th, well, I guess two Fridays after that, and both starting at 5:30. So, Party in Your Park, that's a good time to get to, get to know your neighbors a little bit better, and enjoy the park. I think this was, coming up here soon, it's less than a month away already, movie night, August 2nd. Last year, Peter Rabbit got rained out. He got wet, so we didn't end up showing the movie last year, so we're trying again this year. So, come out to this, if you haven't been, this St. Dominic, Dominic Lofino Park, I tell you, it goes all out. Free food, popcorn, hot dogs, face painting, balloon artists they have. It's a fun time. Kids, last year before it got rained out, they had all the fun, but then as it got dark and movie time, rain rolled in. So, it's like everything got to happen last year except for the movie. So, hopefully this year, we'll get to the movie. But all activities and food are free. So, again, August 2nd, Friday, come out on Grange Hall to Dominic Lofino Park, that's a good time. And this was mentioned, and so we're halfway through the lineup. The 2019 for summer concert series, we're halfway through, so we'll have July 14th, July 21st, July 28th, and August 4th for those summer concert series. Please come 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., so it's not like it's hours long, but come out to, again, to Dominic Lofino Park and enjoy the concerts, and that's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you. And now, the most important part, citizen comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on any issue at all? Please come forward, give us a name and address.
Thank you. My name is Bill Sheeman. I live at 3971 Lebon. I want to thank Ms. Vaughn for coming out and walking through our neighborhood a couple of weeks ago. I want to talk about vegetative and non-vegetative debris. Vegetative's easy. I know you're committed towards picking it up and getting it reprocessed. In our neighborhood, we haven't seen the vegetative debris picked up recently on Lebon, and it looks fairly good when you're driving down the road because initially, whether people were able to re-inhabit their homes or not, they were stacking it out there. But there's so many homes that will be, need to be totally reconstructed that those people aren't putting out vegetative debris anymore. But for those of us who are still living there, we're piling it up, and we haven't seen Paul Bunyan trucks in a long time come down our street. They're probably working elsewhere in the city, but from somebody who's still living there and able to live there, fortunately, we'd like to see every couple of weeks, somebody come through and grab that vegetative debris, because it's over my head now. All right, I'm going to move on to the non-vegetative debris. I know the city manager's position is it's too costly right now without money to, to tackle that. There have been volunteers picking it up, you know, bless them for doing it, but it makes me cringe when I see kids out there in tennis shoes at the direction of adults, you know, not dressed adequately for the job. They're getting it done, but they're risking injury. In our neighborhood, on the four streets that make it up, the Vineyards Church has just been in there, week after week, picking up the non-vegetative debris and hauling it away, and at great peril to, to themselves. So, I think it's something that the city council, you know, needs to discuss in a public forum. You know, are, from my perspective, are all the elected officials behind the opinion of the city manager that presently you can't, you can't tackle the non-vegetative debris? I'd like to hear my elected officials talk about how they feel about non-vegetative debris pickup. Those are my comments, and thank you.
All right. In general, we don't get into discussions at the, at this point in the, in the meeting, but I'm sure the city manager has noted the non-vegetative pickup needs on your street, and the anticipation is that Bunyan will be working for at least a couple more weeks, do you think?
We, we haven't announced a put-out date, a final put-out date yet. We're actually, private township and county are going to talk about that tomorrow at the EMA building, EMA meeting that we have once a, once a week right now. Anybody, though, because right now, we only have one or two Bunyan trucks that are out there, because it's, it's scarce now, and as I've seen it, I've sent an email to Public Services. So, if, if you have some that needs, needs picked up, 427-5540, 427-5540 is the number to Public Services, just call them and tell them where it's at. So, we are still doing that, and we will still pick, pick that up. Just on the side of, you know, as far as the view, you know, as Mayor said, we are working on the public assistance part of the FEMA part, which will be significant. We have, as the press has already asked and has already reported, we'll have, because the biggest expense, another $800,000, $900,000, is the grinding and haul away of the mulch, which we haven't even, even gotten to yet. So, said and done, we'll have $2 million into that side of it. Our contractor, we're working on, hopefully the 22nd, will bring a contract to you, which is EMA approved, not EMA, FEMA approved. Basically, it's in the FEMA format by what FEMA will reimburse by, for, for the contract for that, and it will include construction debris if council so desires to, to go down that road, to engage you. At least we'll already have the cost analysis. Rough estimates for our current contract, so we'll have $2 million in this. If we announce we go to the curb, it'll be $3 to $5 million worth of construction debris, which, again, we'd have to provide options for loan because we don't, we do not have that. $2 million, we're up against a wall. So, but again, we'll, we'll bring options if that's something we want to do. Mr. Casera will search the loans and short-term loans, because it'll, it'll take FEMA, even when they approve, it'll take a year, year and a half to get that money back. So, it'll, it'll be short-term, but if that's the way we want to go, we definitely will hear council and bring, bring back options for that. But I, I think as well, though, too, part of while we're waiting in this process, which when we applied for the money, or for the public assistance part, they told us two to three months before they'd even decide. Then the next day, they said, oh, it'd be a week and a half. Now, it's been a week and a half, now I'm here, maybe two to four weeks, so we don't know when we're going to hear. But it'd be a good just to hear that we get that designation. We have heard that the information did go at the, to the state level, so they're done with the individual reviewing, all the individual counties that they had to do, so that part is done and has been submitted to the state. So, now it's the next step to, which I hear president doesn't have to declare it, it just gets added to it. So, that's good. So, if we've met all of our criteria, which I, I know we did in Green County, but there's, you by the county have to meet a certain criteria, and then you have to meet it at the state level, I believe. So, hopefully, I think we've, hopefully we've met the state level, and if we do, then we'll, that'd be good news to hear. Also, the other thing that we don't know is that with that cash match, so to speak, is 75-25 percent. So, we don't know if the state will kick in some on that 25 percent, so it's not 100% reimbursable. So, you know, there'll be, even, you know, so if you end up getting, say, $3 million in construction, $2 million in that, you had to come up with potentially 25% of $5 million, which does not chump change. That's, that's a significant amount for us. But of course, whether or not it's a standard practice, or if the state would chip in half of that, or all of it, maybe. So, there's a lot of decisions, but, you know, again, we're waiting to hear, hopefully as soon as we can, about thumbs up on the approval of that. But please, if you have debris tree, yard debris, the 427-5540 is the public service number, please call and tell us where it is. We'll guide Bunyan to that. Like I said, every time I drive by and I see a pile that's been there for a little bit, I'm emailing the information in, too, so that's all I have.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that update, and, you know, I don't, I don't think we want to get into a lengthy discussion. Council will be, certainly be considering construction debris at some point, once, but we have to know where that money's coming from. And until we do, and we get FEMA approval or that sort of, I mean, we, just as a reminder, we live off a levy, so we cannot take money that might be in the park fund, or that might be in.
Police fund.
The police fund, and use that for cleanup. We can only take it from the road levies.
And general fund.
And the general fund. And so, that limits our resources significantly, and so that your, your point's well taken, and if, I don't think there's anybody up here that would not say, let's jump on it if the money was not an issue. We'd all love to see it cleaned up, and we'd love to see it cleaned up tomorrow, but it's, we certainly take it serious, and we'll give it all due consideration we can. Anyone else? All right, do I have a motion?
So, move.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.